Okay, it is 6:00 PM. We will call the Chippewa County Board Meeting with 14th order at this time. That stands for the Fledges Allegiance Moment of Silence.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I vote this is weird. A roll call shows 20 supervisors present, one absent.
At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Omar, so moves.
Omar.
Later seconds.
And later seconds. All those favorite, push the green button. It was a red button.
Water bolts have disappeared.
So we gotta switch over to communism.
So much not having technical difficulty.
20 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Members of the public wishing to be heard, I'll call your name and you'll have five minutes. Matthew Hall.
Hold it.
Okay, I'm ready.
I'm here to express my concern and discussion over the proposed milk hauling ordinance. I'm a dairy farmer in Norwood, Auburn Township. I milk about 250 cows, so we have a milk truck comes every day, quad axle. And milk is not a commodity that can be held. It's has to be shipped every other day, even though we technically have storage for up to four, which is a lot for most farms. Most farms are day to day. We are not even allowed by the plant to go more than every other. They acquire every other day shipping, so it is vital. I think it's it's right on the license plate of this state where the dairy state. So I just am concerned why there's a this this industry is being signaled out. I'm sure there's more than more traffic on those roads than just the milk trucks. And honestly, I know it's probably it's actually a bigger issue than just this county. It's it's a national issue. I think that the solution isn't to be putting more and more restrictions on the roads. The fact is, our roads are not heavy enough for the loads. The loads aren't too heavy for the roads. It's the other way around. Unfortunately, I think that'll probably take an act of Congress to change that. But it doesn't help at this level when we're going the other way. We need to start. It's almost got to start here and go up. I think ultimately, you know, these roads were built back when we were doing hauling single axle tandem axle trucks. That's just not the case anymore. They're quad axles, they're they're semis. The loads aren't getting any smaller. They're going to get bigger. So ultimately, I think that needs to be a goal. Like I said, I understand it's way beyond this, but it has to start somewhere. I was actually just as I was sitting in the back waiting, I saw that quote by Seymour Cray. I think it's very apt that the future is a I can't remember exactly, but the future is seldom the same as the past. We have to we have to adapt and 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 progress. And I think putting these restrictions on more and more, trying to save these roads as they are, is in progress. It's a it's a stopgap measure at best. That's just the way it is. Thank you.
Kim Bremer?
Thank you, Chair. And I'm Kim Bremer, the Executive Director of Venture Dairy Cooperative. I know that I spoke with you at your last meeting and last month, we talked about this. And I don't need to revisit the impact of the dairy industry in your county. But I wanted to say thank you for looking at the proposal that's getting the amendment that's getting read tonight. Thanks for at least reviewing the legal side of it and removing the permit fee at this time. What I'd like to ask you as board members in the county is to consider, as you hear the reading of the proposal tonight with a possible future vote, just really to consider the logistics of it and if it's workable or not workable for your dairy farms. You just heard from a local dairy farmer, there are still a lot of issues within this permit. It's it's not the fee necessarily that's the biggest problem, but certainly just the logistics of it. I know that we sent a letter that you should have all received today that had some of those laid out. I don't need to review them for you. You can all read them as well. But just to consider some of the things, you know, if there's additional loads of milk, the impact that this has on the timing, not only at the farm level, which there are requirements on how milk gets picked up, but even at the plant. When I work with milk haulers in other parts of the state, I can tell you, I have a farm in Kibbani County that just lost their milk hauler. They have 2,700 cows, the milk hauler said, I'm not coming anymore because there is a several hour wait when I get to the plant and I can't afford it anymore. And that's in a county that is not slowing them down with road restrictions and a permit. So every everything within this industry works on a very in a very tight timeframe, from milk on the farm, how it has to get picked up, to when we get to the plants. I can tell you that this week, the Wisconsin Milk Haulers Association is working with the governor's office. They're formally requesting an emergency declaration to exempt milk haulers in this 2023 season. The milk haulers were not in your stakeholder meetings. They were not one of the invited parties by any means, but certainly I think they're someone that you should consider working with in the future. We know that Karen Heard, she's our Assemblyman, she's yours and she's mine. I don't live here, but I'm within your district. Karen Heard, she sits she is in the Assembly. She sits on the Transportation Committee. Had discussions with her just this last week. They're working on adding milk hauling and a couple of other things possibly to 34916 to the statute for permanent exemptions. So my point of bringing that to you is that there are a lot of things happening at this level, too, that it really, I don't feel it's necessary that your county needs to act on this. And if there is damaged roads, the milk haulers are willing to work with you. I know that I've spent fun meeting a lot of your local milk haulers as I've been working on this issue and answering questions for farmers. They already avoid bad roads. I don't know, Mr. Kelly, if you heard that in the stakeholder meetings, but they could tell you where all the bad roads are. Because these guys are driving very expensive trucks and expensive equipment. They're doing the best they can to avoid bad spots in the roads. They're not interested in wrecking their trucks either. So again, I'm asking you as a board to consider not doing anything with this ordinance. It would have definitely a negative impact on your dairy farmers, local processors, and it has implications throughout the state. It sets a bad precedent for your county and that there are things that are happening even at the state level that we're all very hopeful for, that we have not heard of in the past. And I will also just throw this out there. I know I said this last time to Venture Dairy Co-op. We're more than happy to work with you, work with your commissioner, work with your county on any of the writing, the local road improvement plans. We've worked with others throughout the state because we know roads are not just an issue here. And we're happy to help and excited that there's a lot of legislators on board to hopefully make improvements and some funding moving forward as well. So, thank you.
Corey Geiger?
Good evening. I'm Corey Geiger. I drove up from Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. I'm the editor of Hoard's Dairymen, immediate past president of the Wisconsin National Holstein Association, USA, which is the largest dairy breed, seven-year member of the Executive Committee of Wisconsin Holstein. I appreciate that this elected body is taking up this issue and talking about it. Some of you may have read my online coverage. The reason we do this kind of coverage, we're the equivalent of the Wall Street Journal for dairy farmers. William Dempster Hoard is really the person who breathed life into America's dairyland. He founded our magazine. As governor, he started the first College of Agriculture or the College of Agriculture, University of Wisconsin-Madison, the first cow college, the first food science departments, and the first genetic departments, and it was for cows, not humans. And what's dairy farming and agriculture and milk processing is a signature industry in Wisconsin. There are states such as Kansas and South Dakota that pour in hundreds of thousands and even millions of dollars to recruit dairy farms. We have that industry here. As you consider and debate these issues, remember that replacing an industry, whatever fill-in-the-blank industry is, costs a lot of money. And whatever expense, and I know that the fee structure is being debated and discussed, but whatever expense expense comes out always trickles down to the dairy farm. And I want to leave you with that because the economic pressures on dairy farmers throughout Chippewa County and throughout the Badger State are immense. It's very hard for young people to break into this industry. It's hard for our multi-generation farms to continue the dairying. And every obstacle put in front of them is a reason for them to reconsider what they're doing and the economic impact they're having in the state. So again, I share that all with you because I think Kim said it as well. There's a number of shareholders and stakeholders that can help push the envelope to get more road funding at the state, and that's really what some of this is about. But again, consider what you're doing, what your constituents, as you move forward, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
All right. We have no other names, so move on. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Supervisor Steele? And is there a second?
Second.
Which is a second? Need a question? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. Green to approve, red disapprove. Did you vote, Dave?
I'm sorry.
There we go.
I tried to push your one, sorry.
Yeah, they stick sometimes. Call the vote?
20 yes, 0 no.
Okay. Motion passes. We'll move on to reports and County Ministry of Review and Updates, Department Report, Cobden Bridge update, Brian Kelly.
Evening, everyone. I didn't mean to go over the whole agenda tonight, but I got about three items in a row here, so I got all my notes. Save a couple trips back. We've been updating the Highway Committee every month about the Cobden Bridge project. A lot of neat things happen in there. So they thought it would be a good idea for the whole board to hear about it. So I'm going to give you some of the highlights, what's happened out there in the last few months and what to expect coming up as the project wraps up. So briefly, very briefly, the history, federal funding. We were working on federal funding back in 2009. We got some funding for the study and a little bit of the preliminary engineering. And the bridge was closed in August of 2014 for the inspection findings at that time. It took three failed applications before we were able to get federal funding in May of 2018. And at that time, they had determined that there wasn't money to fund the final design. So that was 100% county funded. January 22, the bids came in at about 4.7 million, which was a million below the engineer's estimate. Great news for us when we got the results. And we went to work trying to see if we could get some of that design money back. They made a decision that we could get the design money reimbursed, and we got 388,000 back in design funds to use in our other bridge projects. We had some unexpected utility costs on the Cobden Bridge that weren't eligible. We had to pay for about 140,000 electric line relocate that was in our way. Otherwise, we were able to do some bridge stuff and some drainage projects in our construction program with that funding. I have a few pictures of the progress as it went along. August 24, they were moving the deck. You see the first photo there, pulling off the wood decking. That was salvaged and it was picked up by the Chippewa Area History Center folks, and that's sitting at their site now to be used in the exterior of the building somewhere. We had several commitments that we were trying our best to meet. People that are interested in in getting pieces of the bridge that expressed interest, and so that was one of them. The second picture, you can see just one of the torches cutting the stringers, getting ready to take the bridge down. This is a couple of pictures of the stringers in place right before they were removed on the left. And then the right picture, you can see the crane out in the barges, sitting there, and they're cutting off the stringers, dropping them on the barge, and then they're loading them out and taking them away. So the you can see that the E-span, all the stringers are removing that picture, and they're getting ready to remove the E-span. And then the next thing was to drop it in the water. So they basically cut the bottom cord on one end of the truss, and it caused the whole bridge to fail. The first first one didn't come down quite as big as we thought it would. It kind of got hung up, and they took the backhoe and kind of tipped it over. We were a little concerned on that one because they weren't being super careful with it, and we wanted to try and salvage a bunch of stuff, but really, they were just trying to see how it went on that first one. The second one, they took a lot of time, a lot of extra time, went above and beyond, and saved a lot of extra pieces that were nice. So we've got some really neat pieces at the highway shop. We're gonna maybe make some kind of a mock-up of one of the pin connections and put it in our break room or something, but trying to preserve the history however we could and not cause the cost of the project to go way up. When they cut the cord on the bottom, on the second truss there, it kind of just spread, the whole truss just spread out, and then it got hung up on that middle pier, and they had to go out there on a crane, on the barge, with the crane and take a wrecking ball and tip it over. But they spent a lot of time taking that one apart really carefully and turned out to be a nice little surprise for us. Environmentally, one of the biggest challenges, we've got the the location where these threatened species, the wood turtles, tend to live in the Chippewa River. And they like to spend their winter in the river bottom in this area. They're very threatened. So when there's those type of situations, the DNR will put some extra restrictions on your permit, and and there's some different things we had to do to protect them. One of the things, when they moved the barges, they had to move the barges a lot. From October to December, when they would move the barge and drop the pipes down to hold the barge in place, they would send divers down and check around underneath the water and look for these turtles. And if there was any found, there would be a turtle sanctuary where they were taken to. They didn't find any of the turtles. And now we won't have to do any more diving with the type of work we're going to be doing. But there was estimated to be about $180,000 of cost to the dives, and that's now down to about $100,000 at the 80/20 split. So our share, that's about $20,000. But again, these are the type of things that when you have federal funding and you're working in the Chippewa River, you're going to expect to have to pay a little bit for that. And then we do have to put four turtle crossing signs up to just kind of warn people to be careful and watch for them. Two of them on Highway R, Bob Creek, and then two on the east side of the bridge on Highway K. And then into December, they started building the coffer dams. So they'll put the sheet piling around the area they need to work in, then they pump the water out of the coffer dam. And so the picture on the right there, you can see the crew down probably 20 feet below the water surface, forming up the spread footing, getting ready to pour concrete. So that's kind of a neat little way of doing that, working underwater. This picture shows all four piers at different stages of construction. So on the left, you got the pier that's up, and it's already got the pier cap on it, finished. And the next one over, it's up out of the water, but it doesn't have the pier cap. And the next one is still underwater, but they have a bunch of the work done. And then the third one is even further back than that. So we took this picture with our drone, thought it was kind of a neat little phase of the project to capture all four piers at a different phase of construction. They kept going right through the whole winter. It was pretty neat to see that, you know, they're pushing ice around with their tugboats to try and keep the barges free and moving, and and they were able to keep working. They didn't think they would get through the whole winter at one point, but they actually kept going, so. And then in February, the beams came. We got five beams in each span. This is some of the first beams showing up on the west span. The trucks backing down to the water, and the two cranes will each pick an end of that, set it down on the barges. And the tugboats will take the both of the barges out where they need to be, anchor the barges down and and set the beams. The beams aren't set wrong in that picture. They're not crooked. They're actually supposed to be like that because when you come off of Highway 178, there's going to be a widen taper coming out of the bridge, much nicer turning than the old bridge was, and coming in at the same grade as the Highway 178, so you don't have that big climb up onto the bridge anymore. And then this is kind of where they're at now, forming up the deck, placing the rebar for the deck, and then eventually we'll get some warmer weather, pour the deck. So they're they're quite a bit ahead of schedule right now, but they're coming up on some restrictions that are going to slow them down a little bit that I'll talk about. The highest point of the bridge above water is on that far east end, 13 and a half feet. So that's plenty of clearance for any kind of boats that they're going to see up there. So going forward, contractor is going to finish up the deck and the rebar, reinforcement bars. They have an in-stream work restriction. This is pretty common around the state. From March 15 to June 15, because of the fish spawning, they're not allowed to disturb the the river. And so anything they do is going to have to be from cranes up above, pretty much. So that's going to kind of slow them down a little bit. They did ask for an exception, but they were denied by the DNR, and that's not a surprise. It's something that they're aware of when they signed the contract to build the bridge. So would have been nice to keep going, but again, we don't want to disrupt nature and the fish spawning either. October 31 is our contract completion date. I feel like they're doing pretty good. Good feeling that they may be done sooner than that. Projects on budget, budget's looking really good, no surprises. The one thing we did modify our our plan with the ARPA funding, we're going to pave that stretch of Highway Double T from 27 over to the bridge. We know that's going to see a lot more traffic. It was coming up, due for paving in the next few years. And rather than open the bridge and then get all that extra traffic on it and then pave it, we made the decision to move it up a few years and get it in the list for this year and get it paved while there's no traffic on it. So. And then that's the kind of a rendition, the finished bridge will look like when it's done, so. Glad to answer any questions you might have about Cobden Bridge.
Any questions? Thank you. We'll then move on to the business items. First item is Ordinance 223, and I will ask for a motion to suspend the rules for the second reading. This can be voted on tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the second reading?
A motion.
Supervisor Scorsese makes the motion, and the second?
Second.
Supervisor Hall. Yep. This will require a 2/3 vote. And so at this time, if you approve, press the green button, red disapprove. Okay. Release.
18 yes, 2 no.
Okay. The motion carries. And then we'll move to the next portion, which is I would then seek a motion to approve Ordinance 223. Okay, Supervisor Scorsese makes a motion to approve Ordinance 223. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sup. It's a tie. Supervisor Hall? Supervisor Hall will get a second. Okay. Discussion.
Ryan, how many milk haulers have already signed up or received their permit?
So far, we've gotten 12 milk haulers come in, and they received 26 permits for their trucks.
And where do you think that is percentage-wise to the haulers in the county?
I know we definitely have some that were on our stakeholder or list that we put together. I don't know how many trucks each of those have. I know that we had one, one company said that they were that they didn't want to pay the fee because they had eight trucks, so they came in and got two. So I think there's some of that, too, where they didn't get all their trucks permitted. They're, you know, getting some of them permitted that maybe haul in these areas more. We have gotten some comments that they would be in for more permits when there's no fee, if there's no fee.
Supervisor Studeberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make the motion to amend.
Supervisor Studeberg makes motion to amend?
I would make the motion to amend that we sunset this program at the time the road bans are lifted permanently. The reason for that being is that in doing a little bit of digging in to this matter, Chippewa County is, my understanding and belief, that we're the guinea pig now for the state of Wisconsin, that state of Wisconsin is looking at us to see how this is being rolled out and any pushback they're going to get. As we heard tonight, there is legislation at the state level to perhaps alleviate this problem. And as it stands right now, I don't think that there is the support in the community to forward with this long term. I think there's other options that can be had. So my motion would be to amend this to sunset if it passes at the end of the time the road bans are lifted.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I have a second.
Tie again. Give it to Supervisor Miguel for the second. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Any questions? Mr. Chair?
I don't I don't I don't understand the back part. Was it closed or?
Do away with the entire program altogether after the road bans are closed. So even though the ordinance would, if it were to, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't matter. If it were to pass, that it sunsets, it ends permanently at the time the bans are lifted.
Thank you.
Supervisor Schmidt?
I'm going to have to oppose that amendment. I don't trust the state to get something done in just a year, and we're going to be, we're going to end up playing this whole scenario all over again next year. Basically, what we're approving tonight, it's what's been going on for the last 20 years, that we've shown a light on an inadequacy in the state statutes, and now we've put a target, a potential target on our milk haulers. So we need to rectify that issue, and we need to keep it rectified until the state fixes this mess.
Supervisor Bobar?
Thank you, Chair. Regarding all of the milk hauler types that are being recognized in your proposal, I see that from some of the constituents here are saying that the I see that from some of the constituents here are saying that it doesn't cover all of, all of the potential milk haulers that are out there. Has there been an attempt to assess who our customers are and what they are using for milk hauling?
Maybe, yeah. Back to the process with the stakeholders group. We reached out to the Wisconsin Milk Hauler Association Division Administrator Dan Johnson a few weeks before the first stakeholder meeting to ask for representatives. He put us in touch with local milk haulers. In fact, three milk haulers from the Wisconsin Milk Hauler Association Board of Directors sat on our work group. So a little bit of issue with the statement that we didn't reach out to them. They were on our work group. They provided us the feedback that got to the examples that are on there with the different axle configurations. And in those work group meetings, that wasn't a concern. We came to a compromise. They knew they probably weren't going to get a permit to haul legal loads, full loads in the spring because the roads were soft, but they were willing to give something. And then the only real heartburn came after the process was done with a hundred dollar fee. And that's when we made the decision to adjust the dollar fee. We did work with them very closely. We asked them for all their weights. We factored that in and this was all workable at that time.
Thank you, miss. Helpful information.
Push again.
Oh, push again?
No.
Oh, okay. Your name is on here.
Okay. I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I share the vice chair's concerns that this is not going to be alleviated at the state level in a timely fashion. However, as was explained by our highway director last month or when this information was presented, there is a agreement or some type of a purchase in place for the sheriff's department or maybe for scales. Sheriff's Department has the ability along with State Patrol to increase enforcement with these weights. There are the tools in place and I think working with our new sheriff and chairing the Legal and Law Enforcement Committee, we can alleviate any type of, possibly alleviate any type of potential road damage like what resulted last year in the tune of $1.7 million in the county through increased enforcement in these areas. And so I commend the county's efforts in attempting to address this. My concern is for the milk haulers, but it is also for the county taxpayers who are on the hook for millions of dollars worth of damage should the roadways be destroyed because of being over, where vehicles overweight. And yes, it's true, perhaps our roads are not meant for trucks this size, but we also live in the real world. And we're not going to snap our fingers and fix these roads right now. This is obviously a long-term project that needs to be addressed and it's not going to be solved in this meeting tonight. But we have the tools to enforce these load limits. And I think working with, cooperating with our county agencies and through our committees and with our new sheriff, I think that increased enforcement of weight limits is the proper means to address this. Again, I commend the effort to do so, but I, I share the vice chair's concerns that the state is not going to address this in a timely manner.
Supervisor Schmidt?
The damage on F, which I believe the supervisor Tudenberg was referring to was not caused by milk trucks. And we have not seen substantial damage from a milk truck in any road to this point over the last 20 years. So, and I don't understand how more enforcement is going to get us to where we need to be. That's simply going to create a lot of problems for farmers and milk haulers if we require them to meet the spring road bans. This needs, this problem needs to go away. And by what we're doing in Chippewa County, the state's watching today. Everybody around the state's watching. We need to exempt milk trucks from the spring road bans and they'll continue to operate in the future as they have in the past, contrary to road bans. It's a perishable product and most of these trucks will be loaded heavier as they go to the factory. So when they start out, they're, they're not that heavy. It's just at the tail end of the route, but they will be running some banned roads, probably overweight. But we don't, milk haulers are on a tight schedule. As Kim Bremer pointed out, when you get to the factory, they need to be able to get in their spot in line and get emptied so the next one can get in there. Because when that schedule gets screwed up, it's a real mess. It was that way 20 years ago when I was farming and dairy farming, it's worse now.
Thank you. Supervisor Tudenberg?
One last point, Mr. Chair. And perhaps I need to clarify, not just milk hauler trucks, all trucks, I think, should be held to the standard of enforcement. These are the rules. If the state, if the state sees the rules need to be changed, there's a process to do it. You're right, it may not, the vice chairman is right. It may not have been a milk truck to cause the damage. However, the fact is that there was damage to the county roads because of a truck being overweight. And it's not just milk trucks that should be singled out. I think any, any truck that would be overweight should be held accountable to be within the state statute. The statute needs to change. It needs to change and that needs to happen at the state level. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Supervisor McGill? Wait, excuse me. Peterson first and then McGill.
Yeah, as to the amendment to sunset this, I think we got to, Brian's work on this. I understand that they were not exempt and that's why he wants to increase enforcement. And he's worried that these trucks are going to get pulled over. He doesn't know for 30 years they've been allowed to run. So that's why he wants to get this permit out there. But as far as, I'm against amending it to sunset it because as Ken said, then I believe that next summer, we're going to be in the same position to start this all over again next fall. And I think we can put this ordinance in there and if he's got weight limits on the trucks that are acceptable and that they can work with, they might not be totally enthused about them, but they can work with them. At least they can get the milk haul. And I think if the state does change this in the future, we can come back and look at this and say, we don't need this permit anymore. But I think right now we do.
Supervisor McGill?
Brian, when you met with all of the stakeholders, was, was the main issue? I mean, I would think that they would be happy to be able to get a permit, to be able to exceed the weight limit and carry, I think your numbers relate to about a 30%, 38% increase in weight. So I think we've, you know, I think it's a great compromise. But I would also agree that I think we should allow it to expire after this season. And then it's time for everybody that has a concern to start talking to our constituents further up the ladder. But I mean, you've done a great job of trying to work with everybody and save the road, but allow the milk haulers to be able to do their job. And I mean, it's a compromise in the middle. So I think I would, you know, I hate to see any more laws or rules or fees. Or if we were to sunset it after the season, if the state doesn't do anything, we can revisit it. Maybe at that time we can get more people involved that want to be a part of it and maybe even come up with a better program.
Dean, can I say?
Yes.
Yeah. We did get really good feedback from the milk haulers that were at the meeting about the weights. We started, you know, when we brought, the second meeting, we brought back the plan, what we were thinking. And they started looking at their trucks and realizing some of the trucks could haul full load. It's just, we put those axle weights on, looking at what damages happened into the roads. And we wanted it to be consistent across different trucks. And so when they added up their overall weights, some of them were, oh, this doesn't even matter to us. It's full load. So it does affect certain trucks a little bit more than others. I think the bigger ones, most of them are probably okay.
Your button, Ben. Buck, Herald Seal, Supervisor?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Brian. I'd like to thank the highway committee for doing their due diligence, trying to solve a problem. But it's a problem that, I guess, really this county, maybe would have a hard time. But we're trying to help people and do right by them. But the state, according to what I'm hearing, for the last, I don't know how many years, has opted not to hold, hold the milk haulers and some of the other people, like garbage trucks and sewage haulers and everybody else accountable to weights. And that's between the state statutes and those people, not just county board. So as far as us, you know, I think I'm in favor of maybe putting a sunset on it. And really, why visit it? Why visit it again? They got to work that out in the state somewhere. I mean, let's take a look at it, you know? Think, think about this. Tried something, tried to do some help, tried to do some good. And I commend you for it, but this ain't working the way it is. And as much heat and everything is, you know, everybody telling everybody and everything, hey, let's just sunset it at the end of the road bans and let the guards follow where they may.
Supervisor Skorsky?
I just would like to say, you know, we started this discussion after we had the serious road damage in the county. And we at that point said, wow, we don't want milk haulers singled out. And we thought, and Brian organized the interest groups and got it going. And I mean, this was done with the absolute best of intentions. It bothers me a lot that the sticking point became the hundred dollar fee. Every permit in the highway department is just about a hundred dollars. And today, a hundred dollars doesn't get you far. When I think of all the years I spent my 15 cent check off on milk marketing, I just soon feel that this was a much better investment. I think the milk haulers feel it's a good investment. Unfortunately, it became too political. And I think we're better off just washing our hands of it because as a county, if they're on a road and cross over to the next county, they're violating again. And by us, maybe we tried to take on too much here and it's probably better if we, I agree with the sunset. We've already issued some permits. Let's try and work through this season, but then we're just gonna, I think it would be better if we just washed our hands of it and let them get it at a state level would be much more effective.
Supervisor Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess to me, this looks like we're trying to do an experiment here. And rather than just say, let's put the experiment in motion and then end it, how about revisit it instead of just sunset it and say, right after, you know, the first meeting, after the season's over, say, maybe, I don't know if Brian could gather any statistics on how things worked out or, you know, what, determine whether it was a success or a failure or, you know, rather than just saying, okay, let's try it and then forget it. I think, you know, that might save us from some heartache down the road trying to figure out the same issue again, you know, if it does come up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, then we will.
We got to wait a second.
We're waiting for our technology.
So we'd be voting on the amendment.
Okay, so this will be the vote on the amendment? Do you want to read them to them to refresh them?
Yep. This is, I have motion to amend to sunset program after spring road bans are lifted.
So we're talking 2023, so technically we should put 2023.
2023. Spring bans lifted?
Okay. So to approve the amendment, push your green button. To approve, press red.
10 yes, 10 no. Amendment fails.
Okay. Motion fails, or the amendment fails. Back to any other discussion? This would be on the right beginning motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say thank you for the, to the highway committee for creating this, taking the fee down to zero dollars. Not necessarily because every fee should be zero dollars, but I think it's obvious we are potentially getting in a little over our head here. We shined a light on a problem that we didn't know existed, but now we need to deal with repercussions of that. And I think that zero dollar fee is more inappropriate because I hope, I hold the hope too that the state will in fact address this in a timely manner. I'm not, I'm not going to hold my breath, but I'm hopeful that that will happen because what, what we're going to end up here is this checkerboard of regulations, county to county, you're going to have variations, whether you're legal, whether you're not legal. I've had the opportunity to talk to a couple of the milk haulers in my district. I think we probably all know a few people that are in this industry that they're good community partners. We heard earlier, they don't want to drive on beat up roads. They're, they're going to do what they can to be good stewards of the roads because they don't want to damage their equipment. That's just more overhead, more time spent fixing stuff that they could be hauling milk and making money. It just doesn't seem like we, we have the best of intentions, but it feels like in the broader picture of what's going on, we're almost jumping the gun. I, I do understand the need for this permit so that our milk haulers are not open for liability for these kind of increased enforcements. And I'm not necessarily, increased enforcements are a bad thing. I just think we need to understand and wait before we jump into this pool of enforcement and this, that, and the other, so that we can paint a clearer picture for the industry as a whole. Because this isn't like so many people that this is not just a Chippewa County issue. I think the goal of this permit really should be to, milk haulers come in, they get their permit, we get to have a conversation with them about their routes, what roads are they're taking, what sections of those county highways potentially are going to be at risk, vulnerable, have those conversations, see if there's workarounds. I truly believe a majority of these milk haulers will come to the table and say, okay, what, what can we do to, to help this? Because we don't want it to be damaging the road. And if the milk haulers really were the reason for issues we've had with the roads, we would have seen this a long time ago, that obviously the loads are getting larger, but that didn't happen overnight. So I would, I would like to make an amendment as well, see how that goes. But I would like to make an amendment to this ordinance. Are you ready? I'm under the ordinance language where it says, annual spring milk hauling permit will be granted for axle weights on seasonally posted county trunk highways. That, cross out the rest of that sentence and insert, are consistent with weight limits during normal road condition times. I really think that we've, they've been hauling full loads for decades. We are well intentioned, but I don't think we understand the broad picture here. And let's give them a permit, let's keep them going down the road, let's not disrupt the supply chain and let the state really tackle this one. But this will at least give the haulers coverage so that they're not going to be targeted by any extra enforcement, all things sort themselves out.
Second.
Could you read that again, please?
I would.
Where are you? What line are you looking at on?
Do you want to be in the statement of explanation or the ordinance language itself? Because I wrote a version for books, I didn't know exactly.
The actual ordinance would be perfect.
Okay. So when you get to the point in the ordinance where it says, an annual spring milk hauling permit will be granted, it's probably about halfway down of the new language. An annual spring milk hauling permit will be granted for axle weights on seasonally posted county trunk highways that.
Oh, on five, okay.
Yep. Annual spring milk hauling permits will be granted for weight axles, excuse me, on weight axles on seasonally posted county trunk highways that, and then cross out the rest of that sentence and insert are consistent with weight limits during nor, normal road conditions. The intent being allowing them to continue full loads while we sort this out as a broader community.
Can we define which mean by normal road conditions? It's kind of vague.
Non-restricted.
Yeah, non-restricted. However, they're, what they, the load limits that they're allowed in non-spring, non-spring conditions that we're trying to, you know, it would be the same 365 days a year. I don't, I don't know from a legal perspective, a law perspective, how you'd want that. I don't hate statute that dictates.
Only one question with that, Brian, is would their summer weights be lower than frozen road weights though?
We don't have frozen road weights on Chippewa County roads. Not the county roads.
Sure. Would you like me to hand it to you? I printed it out so I wouldn't.
Would it be simpler just to say you're, with the permit, you're exempting them from the road, spring road bans?
But that, that's the, the general intention of this. I just wanted to clearly call out that the, I didn't want to just remove language. I wanted to make it clear that the limits remain the same during the spring road bans. I mean, if you want to use the word exemption, that felt like a different, a different mechanism that would be, anyways.
But aren't you opening up now to?
Can we just, I want to consult with council about adopting an ordinance? If it exists in state law or contrary to state law?
Well, this is a county ordinance, it's not state law.
Right, state law says it's the road bans. So our ordinance be in conflict, we want to make sure that we have legal bones to be at.
There, there's no state statute dictating the weights that we're trying to enforce. We develop those ourselves, we just can develop this too.
That's all signed to the Highway Commissioner's authority under the state statute to do that.
So then why do we have an ordinance in front of us?
Yeah. I hope there's another, this is kind of on the spot, trying to determine whether it's
Well, what about Jim's recommendation to just exempt them from spring load limits?
What are the state statutes that we're concerned about? We're, we're bringing forward put suggested limits and suggested ordinance policy. What, what, these are our county highways that.
State, state only exempts, specifically state.
Emergency, I, I get that, that emergency, but the weight limit piece is where I'm at a loss why we don't have.
Let's refer to our commissioner, more familiar with this.
The statutes we talked about last time were 349-16. Exemptions to special or seasonal weight limits, there are only three of them listed in the statute for septic and holding tanks, public utilities for service interruptions and propane. That's only three statutory exemptions.
Do we really have the power to do this? I, I mean, really, are we taking away the authority of the Highway Commissioner that was given by the state and trying to control it by the county? This has turned into a really, really a bad mess here and that's why I just felt it better we got out of it altogether.
And I guess, just to summarize, corporate counsel here at the last minute now all of a sudden has to try to grab a bunch of research, which is not easy to do if even able to be done. It's because you have to cross-reference back and forth. I understand where you're coming from, Jason, I just don't know if we have.
Right, well, well, if, if it's not, if the weight limits are not amendable, amendable, what are they doing in the ordinance? What, what are we doing? And that's what's really confusing me here. Why, why are we listing out specific weight limits if, if that's not something that is governed by this ordinance? If that's solely on the Highway Commissioner, why, why is it even in the ordinance?
Because we're issuing a permit for it. There's no ordinance for the other seasonal weight limits, six, six tons on a single axle, 10 tons on a tandem. I determine that and I have the authority to go out and put a different sign up if I want to. That's what we established, so if we weren't doing a permit, I could write on that sign, except milk haulers get, you know, six tons and whatever we want to give milk haulers. I would just have a different sign and then it would be enforceable. Which we talked about doing at one point.
So to clarify, if there's no permit involved, this falls solely under your authority, but because there's a permitting process involved, we have to enact an ordinance to do that. Is that my understanding? So if there's no fee involved, then we would, we could just tell directly to?
I don't have the whole statute in front of me, but that is my understanding of the statute is that the Highway Commissioner, if there's a county administrator has the authority to establish seasonal weight limits as, as they deem necessary to protect the roads. That's kind of the intention of the statute.
Technically, in my understanding, even as a board, we don't have the authority to direct what that's going to be. That is by statute is given to the County Highway Commissioner.
But the reason ordinance is involved is because there's a fee involved. That has to come from this body.
All of our permits are in the, in the ordinance, even the ones that don't have a fee.
The reason for the permit is that under 348-17, it's called special or seasonal weight limitations in case that the vehicle can't be operated, can't be operated, that they can't violate those spring weight limits, subsequent vehicles being operated under a permit expressly authorizing such weight limitations. So that's the reason for having a permit part of it.
Yep, understood. It says that only the Highway Commissioner can set said weight limits?
What sub are you under, Todd?
That's 348-17 sub one.
Sub one.
The, yes, the, the local authorities given the discretion to set those. It can be for exempt them or set them to a level somewhere in between the limits are under normal road conditions. The overweight levels are under normal road conditions. If we go in between the road ban limits, we have normal road conditions.
But as, as a body, we can't, we can't amend this ordinance.
To go to normal.
To go to the normal.
That's statute. That's not ordinance, he just read. But you're talking the specific ordinance we're looking at.
Yes, right here. We just talked about why an ordinance is needed and where the order lies. So I'm just trying to get clarification if I should in my amendment.
Yeah, because that's where we run into the statute that gives out authority to the County Highway Commissioner. That's why, that's kind of a, like I say, worms, people can worms.
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get through the can of worms so that we're not on an island putting our milk haulers out there to dry when everyone else around us is looking the other way and somehow, no big deal, but for us, it was priority one to get something in place for this. So I'm trying to go through, open that can of worms and sort it out so that we can give the state time to make this a fair playing field clear across our state, our dairy state.
I, I commend that. I think we're all sitting here trying to figure out what was good intention into.
Yeah, I agreed, it was good in intention.
Good intention.
It seems like it's still bald. I just, we've been talking about supply chain issues for three years, let's not create one though. If that says we can't do it, I'll rescind it or however that maneuver is from a parliamentary standpoint.
Does anyone second into your motion? Doesn't that tie into Robert's role?
Appreciate it though.
Supervisor Bergeron, I, I think based on the language in the statute, I think based on the discretion of the, the Highway Commissioner and based on what's being proposed, I think the better way to approach this would be, is to, is, is not, I don't believe that, that the, I, I think that the ordinance should be voted on as is. If, because it seems to me that the main goal of this, essentially the, what this equals to is an exemption. So, and that's a whole separate, that would need, that would be something that'd have to be raised separately from this ordinance, would be an exemption. Because I, otherwise you'd be completely, you'd be completely amending the ordinance to say that.
I, I get what you're saying about that, but it's not a complete exemption because they're still required to come get that permit. If they do not get that permit, they could still be, still fall under that enforcement category. This brings them to us, we have the conversation, we talk about their routes, we talk about the roads and try to figure out the best way to live civilly during these times of vulnerable roadways. So it, it's not an exemption, they still need that permit or they will be, or they very well could be pulled over and, and cited for operating. And at that point, they would be cited for, they would basically be under the complete road ban. This would be a required permit to haul.
What if we didn't have in there anything where it says an annual milk hauling permit will be granted? We take the axle weights out, we just say, anytime you're hauling excessive posted seasonal weight limits, you get a permit, there should be no fee for the permit. They come in, work with my staff, we look at the roads and it won't be any less than that if we think it's a situation where the road can handle it.
It, it varies by the roads in which they're hauling and their level of vulnerability, you're saying?
At the discretion of the Highway Commissioner.
That puts the authority back where the statute says. Because we don't have that authority.
If we pass that, I can't make any exceptions to anything besides that. That's what we have. If, if we want to look at certain exceptions in certain cases, I guess I'm open to that.
I guess first, do we need to vote down my amendment or is there a procedure for me to rescind? Because it sounds like that's just not a legally viable option.
I, I believe if, has there been a second? Has there been a second?
Yes.
Generally, it's on the, on the floor. I mean, if there's no, if there's no objection from the board, it can be withdrawn.
So I guess I would, I would throw it out to the board. No objection to Jason withdrawing his motion? He would do that, but at this point, we have to throw it out to the board. So I would ask, are there any oppositions to this supervisor Bergeron drawing his motion?
And the, the seconder of the motion needs to agree as well. First of all, first of all, the seconder of the motion needs to agree, both of them need to.
Both of them have to be rescinded, yes. And that would then also follow supervisor.
I have no objection.
No objections, Jason?
Rescind my motion.
Okay. Okay.
No wonder the legislators don't want to touch this. It's complicated. So that takes us back to the original ordinance. Is there any further discussion on the original ordinance?
One, one to clarify.
Yes. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry about that. So just to clarify, we've, are we just voting on this insertion into the ordinance? Or are we voting on this whole ordinance, all two, two pages?
It's just the, well, it's the portions that are inserted in red or any portions that are stricken.
Thank you for the clarification.
So is there gonna have to be a motion if we want to make that change now before you vote? To take those two sentences out?
I would move to amend and strike, an annual spring milk hauling permit will be granted for axle weight limits on seasonally posted county trunk highways that do not exceed the weights and then end at the period at the end of drive axle. Omar will second that.
Okay. So you have the original. So you have the original motion. Want to get the original motion and make sure we get the second.
It's just striking what is highlighted in blue and not adding.
No.
Any.
And Bomar seconded that. And, okay, any discussion on the amendment? Say what?
Peterson.
Matt Peterson, Supervisor Peterson and seconded by Bomar. Hey, Supervisor Skorsky?
Are we getting into that area again of taking, trying to do something that the commissioner only has the authority to do as?
I think we're just establishing a permit now like any other permit in the ordinance. You know, that's spelling out how the permit works, but the actual details of the weight limit isn't in the ordinance now. So that's up to our discretion instead of being defined in the ordinance. Up to my discretion.
Lot of back and forth. Are we sure of what we're doing? It just seems like it's really getting really complicated. When it comes time to vote, I'm not sure where I'm going to vote because I don't understand what we've all done here for the last 15, 20 minutes.
Well, I think you're like many of us and, because again, this is a legal, legal issue and, and there are statutes that give the county highway commissioner certain authorities and this is one of the areas where he has that authority. Now.
Do you need to round that to get to it?
There's no way, there's no way we get around it, but what this does is literally, if you take that in blue, all it is doing is restating what he already has authority to do. And so we're not taking authority away. We're just reconfirming what authority he has.
And it's consistent in our ordinance of spelling out what permits the highway department offers.
So that's the, that's the difference. We're, we're not stepping into gray area here. He already has that authority. We're just reaffirming it. Does that sound right, Todd? Yeah, okay.
Just to be authority, this just creates more.
Certain.
Just make sure it's consistent with 34817 that it requires a permit to exceed those spring weight band levels. This just eliminates some of the guidelines that Brian has to follow in terms of issuing that permit. This allows for discretion, keeps the permit, but gets that permit side of things that allows him to monitor, you know, individuals in terms of what roads they're transporting on and, you know, the weights of vehicles, the conditions at the time.
Supervisor Tootenberg?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but to sum up with the removal of the language as the current amendment is right now, this is, this ordinance is going to be changed and amended to simply spell out the process for obtaining a no fee, no cost permit to milk haulers while still retaining all authority under state statute to the highway commissioner to set those road limit weights. And so as Mr. Bergeron had stated, this, this would bring them to the table and open up that conversation where there can be a communication back and forth as to which roadways, the limits and whatnot, all while maintaining the authority of the highway commissioner. This permit, this ordinance, once, if the amendment passes, does not address the weights themselves, just the permitting process done through the highway commissioner's office, if I'm correct.
Correct, yep. I'm understanding.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah, I think Supervisor Tootenberg asked quite a bit of what I was, the only thing I would add would be, this is just designation or this subject or this section, excuse me, is designated for the spring hauling permit only. I mean, there are other perishable goods haulers that fall into the same timeframe, I understand. I, my understanding is not complete, but this just specifies this particular one. But are there other, you know, the other perishable haulers? Because I, you know, I.
We'll get requests, but we don't issue permits.
I'm amazed about singling out milk haulers. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, that these other haulers of perishable products are falling under the same sort of, I guess, scrutiny. So as far as road usage in this vulnerable timeframe.
The other perishable products will be divisible and they'll be subject to the spring road bans.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Silas.
I like what Brian's trying to do. I think a lot of people feel he's trying to single out the milk haulers, but I feel like he's trying to give them an option to run, which somehow is worded tough on our end, you know, to get that across to everybody. When we revisit this, striking out them lines, are we also revisiting that, what Robert proposed earlier of the sunup, the, that'll be, that'll be dead if we re-vote on it. So this will stay, will stay through years, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other discussion? This would be on the amendment now?
Can you clarify? He asked a question and I didn't know really what the question was. You said yes, so.
If it was sunset. He was asking if it would, if the sunset provision was involved anymore and that's taken out.
It was already voted on.
It's not out or it's off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? You're looking at it. Do you want the clerk to read it? We're doing a striking that out. So at this time, if you approve, are you ready? He's getting the technology caught up with us.
They can vote, but I don't know where the.
Okay. We're having some technical difficulties, but if you approve, press your green button. Disapprove, press the red. I'm thinking. It hurts still.
14 yes, 6 no.
Okay, amendment passes. Okay, back to the original ordinance then. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Yeah. Seeing none, then we will vote on the original ordinance. As amended.
Were you supposed to vote? Eliminate the second reading?
We already did that.
Yeah, we did that.
That was right away, done right away.
Yeah. Okay.
Been a while. Okay, so everybody, we're on the ordinance now, as amended. Green to approve, red to disapprove.
16 yes, 14 no.
Okay, ordinance passes. We'll then go to business item ordinance 3-23. And this would be a first reading. So there'd be no vote.
This is a first reading.
Want to read it?
I don't.
Do you want me to say anything or?
Do you want to say anything on it?
Okay. So this year, in our annual ATV route requests, we received seven of them. And these are the, basically the four that were able to approve in our scoring system criteria that we use. Piece of double A is, is necessary, even though the overall route for double A failed. I see you can bring up the map. One more down. The bottom one, the O sub. Yeah, go to page three of this. So the, this is what they handed in for the application. That's Highway Q from Tar Road to Double S in the village in New Auburn. There's no homes on that stretch. It's really only needed if there's continuity to get into town. And they have Tar Road open, which is the road that goes west. In order for there to be continuity, we need that short piece of double A across on the other side of Double S to be open. It's wide open. It's safe. Further to the east, double A didn't meet our criteria, but that piece is safe for ATVs. So I recommended, and the committee approved, to add that little 350-foot piece of Highway Double A so that Q could reach the other village routes. But otherwise, like Highway Double S didn't meet and Highway M by the gas station didn't meet because of the traffic. But this allows them to get around the village and on their village streets.
Okay. Then we will move on to resolution 1223.
Resolution 12-23, resolution to authorize Chippewa County to enter into a landowner agreement and certificate of inclusion into the Lakes State Forest Management Bat Habitat Conservation Plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors, in consideration of the needs to conserve the bat populations in Wisconsin while continuing multiple forest resource management activities, consistent with the Chippewa County Forest Comprehensive Land Use Plan, does hereby authorize entrance into a landowner agreement and certificate of inclusion into the Lakes State Forest Management Bat Habitat Conservation Plan. And be it further resolved that the county forest administrator be authorized to sign the agreement and submit this document to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources forwarded to the county board by the Land Conservation and Forest Management.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Supervisor Berg, is there a second?
I second.
Supervisor Hunt seconds. Discussion?
I'm just here to introduce Matt Hansen, our forest administrator's going to talk about bats.
Don't want to get to the legal on this one. It's federal law, so it gets very complicated. Essentially, white nose syndrome is a fungus that affects bats. It's caused a drastic drop in bat populations across the United States. In order to comply with the Endangered Species Act, we enter into this Bat Habitat Conservation Plan, which gives us an incidental take permit from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which means that if a bat perhaps dies through the course of our activities in managing the county forest, we're not liable under the Endangered Species Act. It's pretty much as simple as that. There's no hibernacula, which are bat caves where they overwinter. Anywhere in Chippewa County, they're all in the southwestern part of the state along the Mississippi River. And there's no known roost trees, which are essentially other habitat out in the entire state and across the country. But those are very hard to pinpoint and so they're not really monitored, even though they are included in this agreement. What this allows us to do is continue forest management activities pretty much as normal unless we're going to build large, permanent, essentially town class roads, which we have no plans on doing. I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, seeing none?
They're in trouble, Baca.
Then call the vote. All those in favor, press your green button. Those, when she's ready? Okay, she's ready. Or one to disapprove.
20 yes, 0 no.
Brian would be jealous.
Resolution pass. Okay, resolution 1323, resolution to authorize Chippewa County to enter into an opioid.
Resolution number 13-23, resolution to authorize Chippewa County to enter into the settlement agreements with Teva Pharmaceutical Industries, LTD, Allergen Finance, LLC, Walgreen Company, Walmart Inc., CVS Health Corporation, and CVS Pharmacy, Inc. to agree to the terms of the addendum to the memorandum of understanding allocating settlement proceeds and to authorize entry into the memorandum of understanding with the Attorney General.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I will make that motion.
Okay, Supervisor Rice makes motion. Berg seconds. Discussion?
I apologize. I should introduce myself before. I'm Randy Schubert, county administrator. This is a continuation of the settlements we've already had. Understanding is we're going to get about 80% of what our first round settlements were, which was about 1.5 million. So we should receive about 1.2 million of this settlement. And then we would still follow the same state statute that we're required to fill or follow, and we'd still follow the resolution that the county board passed in order to spend this money. It's just an additional settlement.
Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, then we will call the vote. Those wishing to approve, push green. The disapprove, press red.
20 yes, 0 no.
Okay, resolution passes. Number nine, county board chair appointments. I would seek a motion to approve.
A motion to approve both nine and 10 jointly.
I think we have to do them separately. Or don't we? Yeah, that's what I said. Yeah. County board chair's appointments have to be separate from the county administrators. Okay. So this would be just on the county administrators.
County board chair.
Excuse me, county, county board chair. Trying to get through this quickly here.
Set motion.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Okay, discussion? All right, hearing none, we will call the vote. To approve, press your green button. To disapprove. Dean, your button didn't take.
Fred, I was wanting to recuse since my name's up there.
He's trying to push the yellow button.
It's not going?
Right.
All right. Well, I will just handwrite it, I guess. I don't know why it's not working.
I don't know. That's pretty controversial. I'm going to stay well bored here.
So 19 yes, one abstain.
Okay, move on to county administrator appointments. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Supervisor, is there a second?
Second.
Tootenberg, sir, in seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove.
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
19, yes. One abstain.
Okay. Appointments are approved. As usual, any agenda items for future consideration? Get those... Otherwise, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Erickson will make that.
Erickson makes the motion. Is there a second? Supervisor Hall. All those in favor, press green. If you want to do overnight, press red.
And sorry about interruptions earlier. But I did take a COVID test this morning and came back negative. Just so you know.
I want to say a...
We had... yes.
I think it's...
Randy, can I see you a second?
It does now. Halfway through it. Halfway through, I fixed it. So we got a software upgrade and all my little buttons are...